May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Switche.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we know he's here, so we'll just go on.
Okay. There he is now.
There he is, okay.
So that's the grand entrance.
Play him on next time.
Okay, start off this evening, we have a couple of proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation is National Service Recognition Day. Whereas AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps Vista and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country to address challenges facing our communities. And whereas National Service invests in community-based solutions and strengthens the impact and influence of historically disenfranchised communities. And whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education and career skills to those who serve. And whereas the city's Emergency Management Division has had a total of six AmeriCorps volunteers since 2008, addressing emergency preparedness and community self-sufficiency. And whereas the city's Community Services Department has had a total of 26 AmeriCorps Vista summer volunteers since 2013 as part of the United Way of King County's Free Summer Meals Program. And whereas the city's Community and Economic Development Department has had four AmeriCorps Vista volunteers since May 2018, including at the city, Renton Housing Authority, Renton School District and Neighborhood House, working on the Sunset Transformation Plan and/or the Renton Innovation Zone Partnership. And whereas with their commitment to our community and dedication to the well-being of others, our city's AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps Vista volunteers demonstrate the best of Renton's spirit. And whereas the city of Renton wishes to recognize the importance of National Service and to recognize and honor the past and present AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps Vista volunteers who have served the greater Renton community, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019, to be the National Service Recognition Day in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join in this special observance and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 25th day of March, 2019. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a number of Vista volunteers here, but we also have Mark Santos-Johnson that's going to help with the introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council President Person and members of the council, thank you for recognizing National Service Recognition Day on April 2nd. I am joined tonight by three of the four AmeriCorps Vista members who have served our community since May of last year. Come forward. They will accept the proclamation tonight. First, we have Stephanie Snyder with Neighborhood House, Michaela Alexander with Renton School District, and Hannah Vaughn-Miller with the city. We are also joined by the volunteers' supervisors and other staff and supporters who are here tonight to honor and recognize our AmeriCorps Vista volunteers. Could you raise your hand if you're here as part of that group? Thank you all for coming. The city, Renton School District, Neighborhood House, and Renton Housing Authority have been extremely fortunate to have Hannah, Michaela, Stephanie, and Rachel volunteering with us the past year. Each of them have made substantial contributions to combating poverty in the greater Renton community, and collectively, they have done an amazing job working on the Sensory Transformation Plan and/or the Renton Innovation Zone Partnership. In your packet is a list of examples of some of the work that they've accomplished over the last 10 months. The Vista members have organized multiple community engagement activities and partnered with other organizations to provide additional healthcare, education, job training, and other services in support for community members. They have written successful grant applications and secured in-kind donations to support the Sunset Multi Service and Career Development Center and other community projects and events. The volunteers have also partnered with many other organizations to build capacity and create and implement new programs, projects, and initiatives. And they have created numerous surveys, newsletters, flyers, and other materials to improve communication and connections with students, parents, and other community members. It has been a genuine pleasure to work with our AmeriCorps Vista members this year and to witness their selfless dedication to making a difference in the lives of others in our Please join me in honoring and thanking them for their service.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. What we'd like to do is get the volunteers up here with you and also the others that have come down for this, and we'll just get a nice group shot.
Through picture. Come down.
Now.
Don't be shy.
You're gonna have to squeeze in here.
One more, Dave.
You ought to bring a couple right here.
Three volunteers.
Maybe volunteers.
I'm in just a little bit, please, thank you. Ready, right here, one, two, three. And again, two, three, and one more. Thank you.
We will be having a cake reception in the conferencing center to recognize our volunteers, and we invite you to join us at the end of the council meeting if your schedule allows. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Okay, and we have another very important proclamation.
Okay, the next proclamation is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas the risk is even higher for people of color, refugees, immigrants, LGBTQ, and other marginalized community members, one recent study shows 94% of Native American women in Seattle report they have been sexually assaulted. And whereas in King County, more than 7,300 adults and children received specialized assistance from organizations with programming for sexual assault victims in 2018. And whereas demand for services at the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center jumped 19% last year, reflecting the cultural shift that is taking place that has prompted many survivors who have remained silent to now speak up and seek the help they need to heal. And whereas of the 4,888 individuals served by the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center in 2018, half were children. Nationally, 1 in 5 children under 18 are sexually abused. And whereas in 2016, 18% of 10th graders in Washington reported that they had been made to engage in unwanted kissing or sexual contact. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on women, men, children, and youth include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas working together to educate our community about sexual violence, supporting survivors when they come forward, speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and engaging in best-practice sexual violence prevention work helps to end sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 2019 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 25th day of March, 2019. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Switche, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And we're honored this evening to have Mary Ellen Stone, who is the longtime Executive Director of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. Hi, Mary Ellen.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Law, council members, thank you. I just want to say a couple words. I think many of you know that we got our start here in Renton. We started as Renton Rape Line a long time ago. And it's really fitting that I'm here tonight to thank you for the support that you have given us over the last 40-plus years. When we say in the proclamation that services have increased by 20%, that's really a good sign. And I hope as council members, as elected officials, as management staff, you know that the more people can come forward, report, get help, speak out, the more likely we're able to turn this around. So while we are stretched with seeing those kinds of increases, it really is what we have known and have been saying for the last 40 years. So we see that as a good sign and really appreciate your support in standing up and having a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I particularly want to thank you, Mayor Law, because you have led this for the last several years in encouraging all the cities to speak out and have a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I think last year, we had 35 cities. We're going for the full membership of sound cities this year. I'm confident we will do that, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Thank you for the work you do, we appreciate it.
It's a real partnership. I, of course, did bring you some K-Sark swag, some special Be Loud buttons that I'd be happy to provide to you.
That would be great, if you give those to Jason, he'll be sure to get those out.
And let me give these to Jason. And there's a lot that we can do by speaking out, by sharing, well, and encouraging people to get the help they need, to keep talking about it, and to also work towards prevention. So again, thank you so very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Did Mary Ellen get the certificate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got the buttons, I didn't get the certificate. Thank you so much. Okay, okay.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Two items this evening. King County Metro is talking with communities about the future I-Lin route to learn about their needs and priorities for the new rapid-ride bus service and other mobility needs. Please take their online survey before March 29th at publicinput.com/3757. It's important that Renton residents participate in that survey to make sure that we get the best possible service from Metro at that time. The second item is information about preventive street maintenance, traffic-impact projects, and road closures happening this week, and regularly, this website is updated. Can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. That's all I have this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is audience comments. I have two people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. You have five minutes. Marguerite Richard.
Is this, is this okay?
Yep.
Okay. Marguerite Richard, Seattle, Washington. And recently, I saw the movie Best of Enemies. Didn't really understand a lot of what was going on because I really don't know all the black history in this world, but I know that we are credited for doing some outstanding things. So what I did was I picked up a fax paper, local fax paper in Seattle, Washington, and there's a gentleman in there that some of you may be familiar with called Mr. Charlie's World. That's Charlie James. And then I, he says, "The state of the Washington," yeah, "the state of the Washington state black community." So I'm scrolling down on this article. I made a copy for you, then you can give all of them one. It said, "Take control of the Washington State Commission on African-American Affairs and use it to empower the black community the way it was designed." Right now, it is a joke. I didn't write it. Mr. Charlie's World did, Charlie James. So I had to come back because I know that I had put a message through Julia, talking to her about the aging and disability services of Seattle, King County. So then I got introduced to a Williams that's over, I believe, Human Services for the City of Renton. And don't you know that the school teacher, that she didn't call me back? And then really actually stated, "We can't help you." I really wasn't asking for your help, just like the Best of Enemies. "The Lord is my light and my salvation, of whom shall I fear, and of whom shall I be afraid?" And so I think it's a very wicked thing for any of you guys to say that you've done anything miraculous, but you can't even pass a resolution like Portland saying, "Look, all this hate and all these hate crimes, we're gonna pass a resolution because we're sick and tired of it," just like Fannie Lou Hamer. She did an outstanding thing in her day and age, but a lot of people were against her too. But this tiredness is still lingering after the death of such an outstanding black female. And there's more of us out there too. And so I'm offended. And my Bible tells me that offenses may come, but woe unto them that bring them. I'm offended that she would, I would have to just go back and say, "Where's the phone call from the woman?" Or, "How come you're not concerned about people that are breaking the law?" Because City Council is in trouble right now too. They're in real big trouble. They should be just like that man in DC going to prison. They took a lawyer and cuffed him. Any lawyers up there? Huh? Because God don't like ugly. He will come to your house, and he will quicken you and tell you to do the right thing. They should have left us over there in Africa somewhere, huh? Then we wouldn't have to come through this mess, but nonetheless, we're here. So now what you gonna do about it? See, we're here, and we still have to go in and out and through the multitude, just like Jesus did. He said, "Healing all the sick and those that were oppressed of the devil." It's the enemy that'll make you act up. It's the enemy that, look, I'm trying to tell you, he said that the commission up there is a joke. So what we gonna do about it? We gonna keep on letting somebody trick us and fool us as if we don't have a right to be here? This is just the scourge of the nation. And you're not the only council people that I've addressed. I came over there to Kirkland, and I told them, "Don't you tell me that's normal for you to shoot and kill somebody that doesn't deserve to die." Huh? Because self-defense, I got a right for self-defense too, lucid enemy, because sometime he'll get in your tongue too and have you say the wrong thing. But I'm here to put this on record about what you people are doing over here. It's the same thing that King County is involved in, and this whole state of Washington. And until you humble yourself and seek his face, you will be held accountable, just like those city council members are being held accountable right now. Do I have some more time?
Just a couple seconds.
Yeah, just like before, so you can breathe on that too.
Thank you. The next name, I'm sorry, I can't read. Somebody else want to address the council?
I'm Honorable Michael Fuller Suijures.
Okay.
Private Attorney General D. Jurors. I'm here today because of a conflict, Mayor Dennis Law, with Ed Prince.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right now. If you have an issue with an individual council member, this is not where you bring it up.
Well, wait, if you're the mayor, you supposed to know if it's a conflict with your employees or your workers.
A council member doesn't report to me, they're an independent elected official. The most important thing is I'm not gonna let you talk about one council member. If you have a particular question you want to address the whole council about, you're welcome to do that.
Why is it that you're not enforcing George A. W. Bush, Sr., who served in the United States Navy, and also the 41st President, and signed in the Law of America with Disability Act, that Renton City Council Members is not enforcing that Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, and the Civil Rights Act of 1968 that was signed by Lyndon Johnson when Martin Luther King was living? And that Old American Act of October 3rd, 1965, that was signed by President Lyndon Johnson? That being violated, not being enforced. What devastates me? I'm hurt. I've been in this business over two and a half decades before you ever became the mayor. I have traveled across this country fighting for our homeless veterans and families, and now our veterans are sleeping on the streets. Why? Unauthorized, undocumented aliens. 2010, 11.2 million unauthorized undocumented aliens. Then February 2015, 42.1 million unauthorized undocumented aliens. And September 11th, 200, 2,996 deaths, 2,977 victims, 343 firefighter deaths, 19 hijacker deaths, and then you say, "One America." And we're spending $338.3 billion a year for unauthorized undocumented aliens? And then our veterans are sleeping on the streets, violation of Title 8 U.S.C. 1324A inferences, 1 inferences, A inferences, IV inferences, B inferences, III inferences, I-N-A 274A. A inferences, 1 inferences, A inferences, Title 8 U.S.C. 1325 improper entry. Aliens, agents are smart, they can learn. Wait, now I'm looking, you know, in Black Lives Matters. This is not the changes or the dream Black Lives Matters can believe in, our new generation, our own forged females and males who fought to make this country safe and secure. So I'm looking at the violation of RCW 2.04.080, your oath of office, and RCW 2.24.020, your oath, and RCW 2.48.210, your oath on admission, and 98.36.080, malicious harassment, and 42.52.020, activities incompatible with public duty, and 49.60.030, freedom from discrimination, and 59.18.020, rights and remedies and obligation in good faith. Rights and remedies and obligation in good faith imposed, that being violated. I'm looking at the extraordinary pimping of we the people. Where, oh, y'all say Martin Luther King's dream, no. August 16th, 1967, Martin Luther King's state. Where do we go from here? 2019, where do we go from here?
Thank you. Next is consent agenda. I have six items for council consideration. Is there any item a council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move the consent agenda be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Switche, that the consent agenda be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Switche.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has a committee report.
Transportation Committee, committee report supplemental agreement number three to CAG 15190 with KPGPS for Rainier Avenue South Phase 4, which is the South Third Street to Northwest Third Place. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve supplemental agreement number three to CAG 1589 with KPGPS for the Rainier Avenue South Phase 4, South Third Street to Northwest Third Place project in the amount of $1,506,738. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Perez.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And last but not least, Mr. Prince.
Yeah, the Planning and Development Committee, yes, committee report.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee, committee report clarifying recreational uses as part of mixed-use projects in the UC Zone. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the staff and planning commission recommendation to amend the regulations regarding recreational uses in mixed-use projects in the urban center UC Zone, be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First thing in new business is the committee as a whole will meet next Monday, April 1st, at 6:00 PM in the conferencing center. There's three topics: annual risk management update, annual benefits update, and emerging issues. And also, Mr. Mayor, I'd just make a comment that the council did receive two letters today, and they went to the city clerk's office, and to the people that wrote them, they have been, the administration also got them, so they're being taken care of.
Okay, thank you, and they are part of the record now, so we've...
Right, and they're part of the record, so...
Okay, thank you. Ms. Switche.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee will be meeting on Monday, April 1st, at 5:15 PM in the council conference room. We have four items on the agenda. First is Municipal Arts Commission, appointment of Mr. Duffy Delgado, dissolving the Renton Library Advisory Board, track, trail program, and opening briefing, and emerging issues in community services. And that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, April 1st, at 4:30 in the council conference room. There are four items on the agenda: Washdott Renton to Bellevue Project update, Burnett Avenue temporary street, North temporary street closure, Washdott Interlocal Agreement, GCB 3066, and finally, emerging issues in transportation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any business, but I want to comment on Saturday night. It was the ladies' night out in downtown Renton, and it was a really well-attended event, and I really enjoyed all the activity in the downtown core. And I have to say that I bought some candy in Sparkle, then I moved to Bonna Bonna, and I bought a chai tea, and then a plant in Urban Sprouts, and I end up having dinner in Oshatai, where I ran into council member Pavoni.
Pavoni.
I call him Pavon, but he say his last name is Pavoni. So anyway, so...
He doesn't know.
I have heard most people calling him Pavon, but anyway, it's Pavoni. Anyway, so I really want to thank the downtown, first of all, the Renton Downtown Partnership for the, for second, the Renton Chamber of Commerce and the community leaders, specifically Diane Dobson that is here, thank you so much for your time and putting this together. It was an incredible event. I, downtown felt alive, and it was so well-attended. I couldn't move from one store to another one to run into people. So that's the downtown that we want to see, safe, and just with so many people there, you know, and community together.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and yes, I was downtown for the ladies' night. It was very well-attended. It was actually great to see downtown activated like that. As far as business goes, we have a finance committee scheduled for April 1st, 4:00 PM in the conference room. We have three items on the agenda: waterfowl management program, interlocal agreement, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance. And then I actually have one other issue I'd like to bring up, and that is, the council has been receiving these letters recently regarding a high school student that's interested in somehow being involved in council, and there's been a couple of us talking about it. We've actually talked about it in the past, and it's interesting how the youth are actually more interested in city politics and regional politics than for sure when I was in high school. So I would like to actually see if we could take a look at it and refer this issue to the administration and see if there's maybe a program that we could start up and involve a high school student or two, so...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that the administration will explore how we can engage youth with the council. I know there's a number of different programs, and we'll check with other jurisdictions to see what types of things are going on, and then probably bring it back to you with the committee of the whole when we've got some information. and, and then probably bring it back to you with the committee of the whole, uh, when we've got some information. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Corman?
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.